12th 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. Uh GL chapter thirty A. Section eighteen and the governor's July sixteenth, twenty twenty two revised order. Extending remote participation by all members in any meeting of a public body. This meeting of the Great Barrington Housing Subcommittee will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. Specific information and general guidelines for remote participation by members of the public. And or parties with a right and or requirement to attend this meeting can be found on the town's website. For this meeting, members of the public who wish to listen to the meeting may do so in the following manner. No in-person attendance or members of the public will be permitted. But every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access meetings in real time via technological means. Uh pursuant to MGL chapter seven C thirty A section twenty F. After notifying the chair of the public body. Any person may make a video or audio recording of an open session of a meeting of a public body. Or may transmit the meeting through any medium. At the beginning of the meeting, the chair shall inform other attendees of such recordings. Any member of the public wishing to speak at the meeting must receive permission from the chair. The listing of agenda items are those reasonably anticipated by the chair, which may be discussed at the meeting. Not all items listed may in fact be discussed and other items not listed may be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by law. So uh the town is recording this meeting um. And I believe members of the press, uh I see the edge there and uh anyone else um. We have four attendees, five attendees, so this meeting is being recorded by the town. Um okay, so what we're going to do is take a roll call. Um Malcolm.
Yeah.
Garfield.
Here.
Jonathan. And I am here. Um, okay, so uh we have um the minutes that were drafted um kindly as I mentioned by Malcolm. And um Jonathan had submitted some edits. Did everyone get a chance to like a, take a look at the edits?
Just saw it come over, so I did not get a chance to look at the edits.
Okay. Um Jonathan, do you want me to to read what you had sent, or do you want to read them yourself?
Uh if you want me to read it, I'm happy to read it.
Okay, I I have it here in front of me, but yes, why don't you go ahead and read it?
Uh this is to be inserted at the very, at the, at the end after the, the spreadsheet discussion. Uh as Ms. Davis attempted to move into citizen speak time, Mr. Hank pointed out. That we had not talked about the SDR law, bylaw, which was on the agenda. He stated that it needed to be amended as passed at last year's ATM. Because it discriminated against long-term renters by specifically prohibiting tenants from any SDR. Ms. Davis saw nothing wrong with that. One of the reasons put forth in bringing the bylaw amendment to the ATM was ostensibly to try to preserve affordability in our community for our residents. Mr. Hank can point out that the bylaw targets the least wealthy members of our community, full-time residents. Who may be on fuel assistance, electrical assistance, and who may be struggling to pay their rent. Mr. Fix seemed to agree. Ms. Davis said she put that in there because she was convinced that people would be renting multiple properties in order to do. Short-term rentals and landlords would be getting kickbacks. Mr. Hank can point out that we have a zero percent vacancy rate in long-term rentals. And renters typically struggle to come up with the three months rent required to move in. He did not believe the notion of tenants renting multiple properties to do SDR was even a possibility, let alone a threat to the community. Ms. Davis pointed out that the bylaw had been passed at ATM without amendments, so she did not think this was an issue. That the subcommittee should address, Mr. Hank can disagree.
So um this addition just came in a few minutes before the meeting, so I'd like some time to go over it. Um there are some edits I'd like to make, Jonathan. Um, so we can bring this back, uh if anyone um. Objects, let me know, but there's a few things that I I'd like to amend. Um, does anyone else?
We're talking about it, why don't, why don't we talk about?
Uh yeah, okay, so uh on the second paragraph, when it says Ms. Davis saw nothing wrong with that, I'd just like to say that I took disagreed.
Okay.
Um and basically, uh let's see, as Miss Davis. Um Malcolm, it says Mr. Fict seem to agree, um we seen.
We can take away the seem to.
Okay.
See, um you agreed. Yep, is that correct?
Yes. Okay.
So Jonathan, um there are some notes that I'd like to say about this and uh. And I I can't remember if I said this at the, at the time, but yeah, I really kind of see this as an economic development. Um issue and uh revenue generating issue, um and I don't see that. Reflected in these minutes. Um I I do remember saying the multiple properties and the rest of it, but um. There were some things that are are left out that I I I do think this is a matter of economic development and. Generating revenue and and not so much creating uh housing. So uh in terms of where this goes in, I'm not sure, because I just.
Well, I, I, I just, uh Lee, I disagree with what you're saying, but I I I don't think you said it last, at the last meeting about economic development.
Uh okay, would have to check that, but okay. Um so I mean, the main thing is that uh. When the beginning, I'll say that Ms. Davis disagreed um. Garfield, did you get a chance to take a look at this? Do you want this sent to you, or I, you know? I feel like there's, there's more things I need to to go through, um Garfield, do you have that in front of you?
I, no, I don't, because I can't change the screen, but my thought is. Um first, a couple of things, one, are we, as a subcommittee, are we allowed to have an executive sessions if so? I think this is something we need to discuss in-house. And I don't think it's the right time, right now anyway, to discuss it. And I, one other thing I'll say is the SDR was passed and approved by the. Town meeting, so I'm not sure if we're speaking about it anymore is going to make any difference as it has been um. Passed by the ATM, which means.
Well, I, I gotta tell you, just about everything we're talking about in, in this committee requires town meeting approval. So to say that a change would require a town meeting approval. And that's a reason for, for not considering it, I mean, I I don't agree with that.
What, what you mean? I didn't say anything about a change.
Well.
I mean, there exists town meeting, I mean, the town meeting approved bylaws that restrict uh uh where multifamily housing can be. And we would like to change that, I mean, I, I. I don't see the fact that town meeting passed this last year. And left this to me, which is um. A hole in the, in the coverage, I mean, I I don't see any reason for not us not suggesting. That it go back to town meeting and be amended, if that's what we, if that's what we feel.
Yes, I don't feel that way because it, it, because it has been passed, I guess. Um and if there was holes and we, we spent an extensive amount of time on this, an extensive amount of time. Uh quite a bit of attention was paid to it, there was a lot of back and forth, et cetera, et cetera. Um just to do this again, doesn't seem to be proofable to me.
Okay, I'm gonna interject here, um sorry, just because this isn't, uh this topic isn't on the agenda right now. And we're really focusing on changing the minutes, so um. We will, you know, it's, it's part of the housing plan worksheet, but in terms of just honing on this particular. Um item, we're just looking at additions and amendments to the, to the minute, so my main um. Note is that uh I disagreed with what Jonathan said, so. If this is reflected is in what Jonathan pointed out during the meeting, um I'll go with that because I don't have the um. The video in front of me, but uh to say that um. I didn't think it was an issue, you know, I'd like to just have it stand that I disagreed, so. I would personally like to take a look at these additions, I don't feel comfortable signing off on this until I I take a look. So. So we, can we um hold this for the next meeting? Yeah, well, let's hold it uh the minutes till the next meeting and. Thank you, Malcolm, I I know that um it's hard to take the minutes while you're participating, so I appreciate your. You're doing a much better than job than I am. Um and thank you, Jonathan, for, for uh doing such due diligence with the minutes, I just want to have a, a few minutes to take a look. After the meeting and uh compare notes. So um moving ahead, um subcommittees announcements and statements, uh Jonathan, we'll start with you.
Uh I don't have any uh announcements.
Okay. Uh Garfield?
Nothing, thank you.
Okay, Malcolm? Okay, uh I have a few um. So just with some updates with construct, as uh you all know that I'm the development director of construct and. Um this has come up a few times. Uh through, you know, through planning board meetings and select board meetings, um so just to clarify uh. Um construct does have an offer on the um the windflower, we have not closed yet. Um that is in the works. Um that's uh uh destined to close at the early, in early December, so um. When we have a, a full closing, we'll be able to, to share with you more. Um some specifics about that, but I just did want to let you know that that's a, it's a thirteen unit um. In with a three-bedroom and a four-bedroom, uh two separate properties on the um, the actual property. And once we, we close in early December, we'll be able to give you some more information, so I just wanted to, to confirm that and. That's one of the reasons why you really haven't seen it out there, because we have not closed, but we will be closing early December. Um the other item I wanted to bring up is that along with construct um. Uh the Castleless Farm in New Marlboro, uh we did close on that uh in September twenty ninth. And that is a twenty acre state that we acquired through um after an auction, after the original uh buyer um. Uh decided not to go ahead with that, so we do own that. And um the, the item that we're going to be pursuing is making that into workforce housing. Uh we have quite a um, a lot of work to do. And there is a one-bedroom house and a three-bedroom house that will be um. Uh detailing first in terms of making that into workforce housing before we. Uh start on the four-bed, fourteen-bedroom main house. Uh in addition to the fourteen-bedroom main house, we have a, a six-bedroom annex, which also needs quite a lot of work. So we're in the pre-development phase and um. The hope is that in next year in winter, we'll be applying for the pre-development funding. And spring twenty twenty four will have a ground, a groundbreaking. And hopefully followed by that, we'll be having some occupancy, so that's another workforce housing initiative. Um the New Marlboro Affordable Housing Trust and the town was very generous in, in providing um. Some money towards that uh initiative, so that, that has closed. Um and construct, yes.
Does New Marlboro have any affordable housing?
They do not. Absolutely, and and that was one of the um, the reasons why they, they uh really stepped forward, so the, the citizens came. And all the money, the funding that came um to the project was from the citizens of New Marlboro, which is wonderful. Including um substantial funding from the, the town's Affordable Housing. Um trust, so um that's really exciting. And there is a, a single-family home that construct is looking at um with a deed restriction that. Has been donated by the Tearingham Affordable Housing Association, so that's another property that we're looking into, so. Um quite a, a, you know, a few in, uh projects coming on stream with construct, but. Because when flower has been kind of talked about, I just wanted to clear the air and let you know that. Something is happening, but because um we haven't closed, we're just keeping that under wraps for now. Um, any questions?
Yeah, I mean, um maybe this is a good time as opposed to waiting for the spreadsheet, but um. Uh. Yeah, the planning board is currently working on um several different initiatives to that are, may or may not be on our spreadsheet. Um, we're, we're, we're beginning to talk about alternative residential types um. And how our zoning fits in with that and also how um, how it fits in with the uh building codes.
Mm-hmm.
Terms of um, uh you know, multifamily and single room rentals and that kind of thing. Uh we're looking at Stockbridge Road rezoning. Uh which may include um, that's what we're going to be discussing in the next meeting, which would include uh. Uh building incentives for building affordable uh properties along Stockbridge Road. Um we're looking at streamlining, and I mentioned this in the last minute, I'll just mention it again, we're looking at streamlining. Site plan review uh by um. Uh building up performance standards so that. Uh a lot of the projects that would come in, residential projects that come in unless they're really big projects. Wouldn't even have to go through site plan review, they'd just be by right. Uh eliminate a lot of the uh um court challenges that come uh to site plan approval. Um and then we're also looking at uh issues around driveways uh um and I. Think uh if we either have or will be recommending. That the um um town code be modified to include. More than two, uh to allow more than two curb cuts for a property. That would allow for more access to a property for more housing.
Okay.
That would be the idea there, and last, uh this is kind of in combination with. What was passed at the last town meeting, which had to do with uh. Uh uh increasing the number of uh, of units that could be on shared driveways.
Okay.
All driveway thing, getting back to uh uh housing on, on properties is, is important, so.
Yeah, absolutely, great, thank you, um I did, so I did.
Driveways, not shared driveways.
Yeah.
Sorry? Common driveways, not shared driveway. I'm sorry, common driveways.
So I had to, uh yeah, so thank you for that, I, I did watch the planning board meeting and um I did have a, a nice talk with Chris this morning. Um filling him in on the, the worksheet that we began uh during our last meeting. And he's going to be putting together an executive summary, as you all might know, for the um select board. And he's going to be working off the housing uh plan worksheet that we started. As well as his own notes, so it's going to be very collaborative and I've shared with him this worksheet. And as we tweak it, he'll be using that to inform his uh executive summary, so we're just, you know, we're really cognizant of. Duplicating efforts and trying to streamline the process and. Part of this worksheet was really siloing all our efforts, so if it's, you know, more planning board um led. We could, you know, put that in the planning board column. Um if it's something that the select board needs to take the lead on, or if it's real private developers, or if a home petition is needed. Um so that's one of the reasons really for the, the housing plan worksheet and. Um, you know, I wanted to make sure that Chris felt that that would be helpful. To the town in terms of creating this executive uh summary, yes, Garfield?
Um I believe we had talked about having all of the alphabet together as a, because you just had mentioned, which is. Reminded me of not duplicating services.
Mm-hmm.
Of that we might have the CPA and CPC and whatnot.
Absolutely.
Get together, and we have, so I'm wondering if that's going to happen and when, when we might schedule it.
Yeah, yeah, I think that was a, a great idea that you brought up last, um last meeting and. I think what we uh, and correct me if I'm wrong, that we were gonna continue with focusing on the worksheet. And uh when we felt that it, we'd gone through all the different um strategies that had been uh suggested. It might be a time to start bringing in um some of our uh. Our supporters and stakeholders, so that we could kind of collate and coalesce some of the information, but. Absolutely, um I know the housing, Affordable Housing Trust Fund has a meeting tonight, Garfield, do you know what um? They're gonna be focusing on um in particular, or?
I do not know what you're focusing on.
Okay, okay, um so I think that. Uh if you guys are um immutable, we could take a look at the, the housing uh worksheet, the plan and. Um what I tried to do was um try to categorize it a little bit. Based on the lead entity, so at least that way we can say, okay, well, this is definitely something that is zoning. Um bylaw or a zoning amendment, um this is something that the select board should take the lead on. Um something uh with uh SRO, single-room occupancies, that might be something that might be led with, you know, a private entity. Um such as construct, doesn't necessarily need to be. Um so what, what's the feeling on the, the subcommittee? Do you want to revisit that and, and just have that on the screen and, and use that as? Um to move forward?
Yeah, I think it's a good idea.
Okay, all right. I will share my screen. Okay, can everyone see this?
Yes.
Okay. Um so. I've, I've moved the categories a little bit around, uh priority I put in the left and, you know, obviously this is work in, in progress, so. Um nothing is set in stone. And just to uh remind you, the housing strategies were anything that came to us, so whether it's. Something from the Housing Needs Committee, can you see the cursor when I'm doing this?
Yeah.
Okay, um so HNA is, is Housing Needs Assessment, so that's uh referring to anything that was pulled from that. Um LD is just something that um I found, uh doesn't mean that I came up with the idea, but I was able to access it. Um. We have uh the one Berkshire, the housing vision uh for the Berkshires that one, uh one Berkshire put together just last year. Um and, and so forth, so if there were specific. Strategies that you'd like to bring up, um we could certainly just put it in this housing strategy column and. You know, make a note of that. Um moving forward, uh any links that would make it easier for us to find in uh additional information, that's what this link column is. Um the lead entity, this is what I was just talking about in terms of um trying to focus on, you know, what. Uh board or what committee or what entity would be the best in terms of taking the lead, so I. What I did is I, I assigned numbers and uh number one for town. Uh meaning that, let's say, Chris Rambold might be doing some um investigation, the assessor might be. You know, putting together inventory of property, so that's what that's referring to, two for planning board. Um three for select board, four for private, um I just put private down in terms of, you know. That might be a private developer or nonprofit taking the lead uh for now. Um it doesn't mean that that's exclusive, uh home rule petition, this is something that I was um. Exploring, there's, there's a, a few things that we would really need the state to legislate on for us to move forward. And it might be easier for us to um to consider. A home rule petition, writing up a home rule petition that would speed things along. So that's where the um, the number five home rule petition comes in. And uh when we move further down here, we, we could uh explore that. Um so that's what that's about, and then uh six for housing, uh Affordable Housing Trust Fund. Um I think Chris mentioned, Garfield, correct me if I'm wrong, that um. That group might be looking at ADUs and.
Yes.
Honing on that, so I put that in the um Affordable Housing Trust Fund category, just to make a note. Uh because what I was um cognizant of is, we, we didn't want anything to slip through the, the cracks and. If, let's say, one group was focusing on one particular strategy. We might be able to say, okay, well, you know, the Affordable Housing Trust Fund is, is looking into that.
We are doing, if I can just, but you know, we are doing tiny house discussion file up. And ADU slash tiny house, we, report proposal.
Oh, super, okay. Um so I think that's in here, uh let me just put my glasses on. Okay, so here. And obviously, you know, we, we could have two things under this, but if, if we know that the Affordable Housing Trust Fund is looking into, at least that'll. Know that they're taking a discussion. Um is there anything, uh since we had our last discussion that you wanted to add on to it and then just to make sure. We come back to it, um Jonathan Malcolm, is there anything that? Uh. You want to just?
I, I went through, trying to come up with my own mind in terms of level of effort and the impact and. And I'm not sure fiscal impact is the right uh term for there, I think we need to. Really assess what is the impact of this thing on a meeting or housing goals.
Okay.
High or low.
Okay. So do you think that would be covered possibly under goals and outcomes and we could um?
Well, I don't, I don't know, I don't know what you mean under goals and outcome, but I think uh if you're gonna prioritize anything. You have to have the level of effort, high, medium and low, and you have to have, what is the impact, high, medium and low?
Mm-hmm.
And uh um. And to me, that's, that's, that's how, I mean, it's a simple way of determining priorities, if it's a. You know, low level of effort and a high impact, then it's a slam dunk, if it's a high level of effort and a low impact, then. Maybe we should forget about it.
Okay. I think that's a really good point. All right, so I just uh changed that to impact.
And, and you know, this is really important, because as I went through this. There uh many of these things, in fact, all of these things you have a one, as far as the lead entity. Is going to require staff time, sometimes significant staff time. So, uh you know, some of these things, uh we're gonna have to figure out how to fund staff time to even do them.
Yeah.
Uh I don't, I don't think the four of us are gonna volunteer to do all, all the legwork on some of these things.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely, and, and that's why um sharing this with Chris. So that he can say, hey, wait, this is, you know, way too much, or this isn't the best use of my time, or the resources of the. Um department, you know, that'll, that'll uh, I think, will speed things up. In terms of really that, the amount of effort that's, that's needed on, on the town, or from the town. Um Jonathan or Garfield, did you guys have any thoughts about this?
Yeah, I think uh, I'm a little confused, because I'm, I'm. I'm looking at the one you sent, not the one you have on the screen, which we.
Okay.
Which you did not send. And. Uh. You have one that says offer ADU and tiny home incentives.
Mm-hmm.
And, and that, I think that should be a priority.
Okay. Yeah, so the, you know, I ca- I can't share, we can't have a, a working Google Doc that we're all sharing together, so that's the reason why. Um you know, we're not on this as a, as a um. Uh document that's dynamic, but the tiny homes, let me just see what number that is. So number twenty-two, so we're looking at the one on the screen right now, Jonathan, um offer ADU and tiny home incentives.
Yep.
Uh, okay, so. In terms of incentives, wh- what are you thinking? Um. Are you thinking?
Well.
Or subsidies?
I, I don't think the town's gonna offer subsidies, but I certainly think that the. Real estate value could be frozen. Uh at the pre-ADU level for X number of years, if they agree to. Uh rent that affordably.
Yeah.
And the other, the other, the other, the other thing, which I've spoken to the planning board about. Um. Is that there is a. There is a, uh, an ADU builder. Out of Pioneer Valley that goes around to various towns. And uh basically gives seminars on. You know, what are, what are ADUs and how do you build them and. You know, what are the hurdles to the town, and so he's doing that in Maine, he's doing it in New Hampshire, he's doing it in Massachusetts. I suggest that, that it, that we should organize something and bring him here and try to. Get the public involved.
Okay. Um, so some of the pushbacks, and I mean, you're probably the right person to talk to about this, you know, that, that I've heard is um. You know, sometimes people don't want to be a landlord and that, you know, banks are reluctant to finance. Um ADUs unless you have X, you know, lots of equity in your home, and you know, many people don't have excess equity, so. You know, the people that are struggling to get by have. You know, a home, they don't necessarily have enough equity to cover financing something else such as an ADU, so what, what's your answer to that?
Uh well, the banks have, each bank has a different policy, uh and I don't have a catalog of those. I know that Berkshire Bank no longer offers any construction loans.
Mm-hmm.
Uh. But there are, I think there are banks. In Berkshire County that do offer. Uh funding for. Uh financing for ADUs.
Okay.
They should be identified and brought to the public's awareness, it seems.
Okay, so with this, I mean, obviously this will take research. So who do we think will do this? Who will talk to the banks? Who will, you know, really get a, a, a pulse on whether people want to be landlords, do that, you know, do they want an actual tiny house on their property and?
Isn't that the last item on the spreadsheet?
Yeah, see, this is, some of the things probably could be combined. Um, so this is one of the things, maybe I can, I can put the two together and we could just have ADUs together. That would probably be a, a smarter thing. What do you guys think?
Sure.
Okay.
Yeah, you're both putting number six on there, so uh, I mean, you put number six on both of them, so that's a good, good home for it, I think.
Okay. Uh, so I'll put this together.
I have a question. Um, you can't see me. Uh, if you can see me, I don't know why that's like that. Oh, I know. Alright. Um. This just happened to be something I heard the other day, and I think a, a gentleman had stopped in actually into TAPs and asked about a farm and him having, he had a tiny home. And those Great Barrington uh, allows them, and he was looking for a farm. Did we not talk about that? At one point to maybe have these homes placed on a farm or make it so farmers could have these homes and a little access for their workers, et cetera?
Uh, there is, there is a, there is language in the zoning allowing multiple uh, ADUs for uh, farms, as long as they're for farm workers.
Yeah, I mean, I think uh, I believe the CDC might have been looking at that, or they, they are looking at that concurrently. Um, some of the questions, uh, I guess are infrastructure and septic um, and, and how that really looks. You know, whether the farmer has enough land, um, you know, how the roads. So I think it's, it's quite of a big project. Um. In theory, I think it sounds great, but I think logistics, it might be hard.
Well, the other thing is that uh, uh, movable tiny houses are ADUs.
Mm-hmm.
And in a, ADU, you have to have a primary residence. And so you cannot move a movable tiny house onto an empty piece of land and and live there while you're farming.
Hmm.
Not per the existing zoning.
Mm-hmm. Well, that's the, you know, that's one of the things that I'm am uh, curious about, like, who's going to lead this exploration to all these um, you know, details of ADUs and movable homes and um, so if we can uh, you know, find someone, the, the Tiny Home Association, didn't they come to speak to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund? Uh, Amy Turnball, did she?
And yeah, Amy Turnbull.
Yeah, how, how did that go? Or is, is that worth having her come and, and speak to us? Or uh, can you give us a sense?
It'd be worth having to talk to us, I guess.
Okay. Is there anything that, any takeaways when she did talk to you before?
Not that I recall, it's been, it was a while ago.
Okay.
A lot of stuff going on, so I don't know.
Okay. Alright, I'll, I'll, I'll put a note, um. And she might be able to, to give us some.
And I will listen to this evening, too, in our meeting tonight and see what we actually
Okay.
So I'll do that as well.
Great.
And it's, it's Turnbull, not Turnball.
Oh, thank you. Thanks. Alright. Uh, great. So I, I can, I combined the two ADUs. Uh, anything else that anyone wants to add? Um. Sounds like the curb cuts. So Malcolm, you mentioned the curb cuts. Is this to facilitate people that want to create affordable housing, or could they, in theory, just make market rate housing? And how, how would this look?
Um, I don't think the I, I, uh, our recommendation on the, the driveways had nothing to do with affordable housing, it was really just housing.
Okay.
So uh, it wasn't an incentive, you can have another curb cut if you're going to make um, you know, uh, additional units affordable.
Okay.
And we hadn't talked about that. We didn't say no, but we didn't, you know, that's something we talked about.
Okay. Alright.
And I don't think it, I don't think it needs to be. I mean, the, the point isn't so much necessarily about affordable housing in this, in this particular case, it's just getting access to our property for housing, whether it's you know, affordable with other incentives or whether it's mortgage rate.
Mm-hmm. And, and I guess I'm assuming there would be buffer zones and so it's not that it's completely by right, there would be some?
Well, there's still zoning involved as far as the, any building that goes on.
Yeah.
You can't do any building unless you have access to it. So this is, this is just one part of the
Gotcha.
Solution.
Malcolm, since you're talking about driveways, uh, Planning Board is also discussing uh, language to amend the town bylaws about uh, number of curb cuts.
Yeah.
Cur- currently curb cuts are limited to two per property unless uh, is extraordinary, what was it? Need or something that?
Yeah.
It was funny, funny language. And so we're proposing to revise that to from needs to benefits. And uh, showing a few sample things that could be considered benefits, like creating additional housing. Because right now uh, you know, with two curb cuts and you could have a mile of frontage, you could, you can, you'd either have to divide it or you can't put in another house. So it doesn't make any sense.
Okay. So they would have to go still through the site plan review, it's just that this would be the first, they could jump over one of the hurdles.
It's, it's not site plan review, it's, it's a driveway permit.
Yeah, it's a select word permit. And the select word then um, would be uh, able to grant a third curb cut
Yes.
the benefit was there. And the benefit being additional housing would be a primary benefit.
Okay.
Or one of the benefits, but yeah.
Okay. Alright, so this is really a select board slash uh, main board.
It, it is both in terms of the, it's, it's, it's not a planning, it's not a zoning bylaw, it's a general bylaw.
Okay, great.
Isn't it, Jonathan? Yeah, yeah.
Yes.
Okay, but this would allow for more density on a Okay.
Yes.
Um. Potential. Okay. Uh, I just wanted to focus on number twenty-three, the, the, the Home Rule Petitions. And I, I was talking to Chris about this earlier. Um, you know, s- some of the things such as a tax abatement or tax relief would need to come through either legislation, state legislation, uh, or um, a Home Rule Petition. And, you know, state legislation could take years and years and years, and we're not guaranteed that that's actually, actually going to happen. So my question to this uh, subcommittee is, are we interested in pursuing uh, writing any Home Rule Petitions and bringing that to the sl- to the Select Board? Um, in the form of uh, expanding, I, I, I was focusing on myself, expanding property tax relief for low-income seniors. Um, this was done in um, in Boston, and I thought this was very interesting. I'll just click on this link. Um. And you know, it would take some research to see really how this would look. Um. Their property sales are, are quite large, they're looking at over two million, so we might want to look closer to the median rate of Great Barrington, which might be, you know, five hundred thousand or six hundred thousand. But um, they did find a way to uh, give some relief to uh, qualified low-income senior homeowners. So I, I found this really interesting. Um. And I can send a, a link to everyone if you want to look at this uh, further, but um, there's, yeah, has, has anyone um, looked into this or is this new? That you've um?
No.
Okay.
I've not, but it sounded like a great idea.
Yeah, yeah.
Did explore.
Yeah, yeah. So um, and this is something that, you know, we, to kind of move it along, we would have to explore a um, a Home Rule Petition. Um, and that's something that we could really uh, take the lead on if we thought this was um, worth it and bring something to the Select Board and bring to town meeting.
I, I, you know, I remember question, I think I'm spot on in this. Um, Great Barrington's a population of elderly folks is like twenty-three percent. It's on the core of our population. I think it does need to be uh, definitely investigated, looked at, whatever term you use.
Yeah, yeah, I agree. I mean, the, the aging population, um, absolutely, we should be focusing on that as much as affordable housing, I, I think. Um. And then there's, there's the idea of a, a local option transfer tax. And uh, this was something that I found, I'll click on it. Um, again, they did in Boston, uh, in Nantucket. But uh, this is something that um, has been done in, in terms of a, an additional tax, and this tax would go towards um, the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, for example. And this would be used to um, to relieve some of the impact uh, for people looking for affordable housing. So this is something that would also potentially be a Home Rule Petition. And again, it would be a local option transfer tax, and in this case, it might be a buyer would pay one percent of the portion of a purchase price over six hundred thousand dollars, and the money goes to, let's say, the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. Um, so this was something that, you know, if we were interested in, we could flesh out and explore, um, bringing that to town meeting. Malcolm?
Um, it, that previous article we brought up about
Yeah.
the Boston, um, sounded like they were using their um, uh, the two, uh, the uh, excess property um, tax to fund this uh, uh, senior income.
Mm-hmm.
Senior uh, housing, right?
Yeah.
So they work together.
Yeah, exactly. It was, it's basically uh, together, yeah.
Yeah, they work together, and, and that would be a good use for it. I, I in, in going back to your first question about the timing of these things, whether it's worth our while to do these things because there's such long-range uh, uh, solutions, I think that really depends on going back to the chart and whether we think there's really high impact.
Yeah.
And uh, certainly a way to um, to, to pump some money into the Affordable Housing Trust Fund and
Mm-hmm.
uh, and uh, perhaps uh, uh, increase uh, uh, the senior property tax relief.
Yep.
Those, those are all good things to me.
Hmm.
And they're going to be long-range things, but uh,
Yeah.
you know, in my mind, they would be things that we should uh, uh, we should uh, strive for, I think.
Yeah, yeah. I actually, I, I absolutely agree, and you know, this is something I would be uh, you know, very, very um, you know, pleased to, to help out and, and to, to work with, you know, town to, to drive this, because I think this is doable, but it will take some time and effort.
Yeah, and it's going to take some town resources, and that usually means Chris Rembold, so.
Yeah, well.
This would, this would have a huge adverse impact on property values in Great Barrington. So.
Can you explain that, Jonathan?
Yes, please.
Yeah, absolutely. Uh, it's hard enough to sell anything in Great Barrington, let alone Husetonic. Because of the water situation. And all of the surrounding towns. You know, they have fiber, they have low taxes. And we have high taxes, we don't have fiber. And we have Husetonic water and uh, you know, no one wants to live here because our taxes are so high. And now you're effectively going to raise the the, the price to, to buy into town, which doesn't make any sense to me.
Well, I think
everyone's, everyone's going to say, screw it, I'll just move to Alfred or Egerton.
Hmm. Well, Jonathan, you, you pick up a, you know, you have a good point. Uh, there's always an argument to any housing strategy, and I think it's worth having this discussion, um, and fleshing it out and you know, perhaps if it gets to the point that we think we can bring it to town meeting to, to have that discussion, but I think there's pros and cons to everything. Um.
And the other thing that you, you might look at is whether it is because you know, most of our seniors who are selling their homes, that's their, that's their asset uh, that they've saved their whole life for.
Hmm.
And and so you could qualify this to say whether that Great Barrington residents are excluded from this. So that they could benefit from, from selling their home as opposed to being penalized.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, I, I think with this, um, you know, there, there could be um, provisions made for that, or if you want to pass it on to a family member, um. You know, I, I think this is why it's, it's worth exploring and, and thinking of all these, these um, pros and cons, absolutely.
Yeah, I mean, one of the things about uh, benefits is uh, sometimes there's unintended consequences to them.
Yeah.
With which, make sure we understand what all those are.
Yeah. Yeah.
And we certainly won't adversely impact the property prices in town.
Um. Yeah. I know, I spelt that wrong. Um. And or the left one, it's so small. Uh. Yeah, so I, I absolutely, I think that's a good, good point. So is it worth, um, you know, I'd be happy to start looking into it. Does anyone else want to work with me on this, or should I um, you know, talk to Chris about it and see what would you, what was this subcommittee would like to next steps?
I, I don't think we should start working on anything until we've looked at everything and, and see what priorities uh, Chris and the town would put on things as well.
Okay. Alright. We'll put it on our, uh, our list. Great. Uh, and I think he, he had mentioned also tax abatements, was, was the Planning Board looking into a tax abatements for developers that wanted to, um, instead of market rate housing to, to create affordable housing? Was that something Planning Boards looking into?
Well, it's something we recommended, but we can't do that because we don't do tax abatements.
Yeah.
That's not a zoning bylaw.
So is that, that's something that we should add here? Or is that already covered?
I think it's, you already have it, don't you?
Let's see. Um, I think I probably did. Offer tax, yeah, uh, I said, yeah. So this was another potential Home Rule Petition. Okay. So um, is there anything, I'm just kind of going down, but is there anything else that kind of came up?
Yeah, um, I, I was, I was thinking about the thing you had from the One Berkshire is that about the thirty percent rule.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
How, how in the world could we actually change that? I mean, that's
I think this is, is state legislation, um, that we would have advocate. Yeah, yeah, this is more of advocacy and really bringing this up, um, either working on a regional level, saying this is an issue. Uh, this is something that One Berkshire brought up, so it's not something that Great Barrington could lead on their own, but it, we could lead the, the advocacy work and um, compel the state to, to take a look at this. So that was just, uh, I'll click on this so you can see where I got this from.
Yeah, and I have a feeling it, it, it's a lot bigger than the state even.
Mm-hmm.
Start doing ADA required.
Yeah, this is a long-term. E- everyone's seen this, right? That, the One Berkshire Housing. Uh, it, it's quite, you know, it's quite detailed. It just came out last year or at the beginning of this year. Um. But uh, you know, this along with the Housing Needs Assessment from twenty-twenty from Great Barrington, I think is, you know, really good blueprint. So if you haven't looked at this, I'd be happy to send this link to you guys. But this is where it came from, um, Malcolm.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I saw that.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was very good. I mean, I agree with it, but it's
Yeah, yeah.
I, I just wonder whether it's worth our time to, to really dive into it.
Yeah.
Because it's a much bigger issue than anything we can deal with.
Yeah.
That anybody listened to us about.
Exactly. And, and this could be the thing that, you know, when we're starting to populate this level of effort, you know, I mean, this could be an H. You know, straight away. Um. And yeah. Exactly. Uh, but you know, at least we're aware of it, and it's, it's something that uh, we should keep our eye on. Um, anything else, Garfield or Jonathan, since our last meet, that's come to your?
The, the matchmaking program that you're referring?
Yeah, yeah. Uh, this was just kind of a brainstorm, um, that I was thinking about, and other than realizing, um, and I'm going to be an empty nester soon. But uh, you know, some of us will have empty rooms, and I may have a very small house, but you know, there might be a, a point that you want to rent a room, you want to try to help the community. Um, you're uncomfortable with going uh, online and just fishing. You want to try to help the community. Um, you're uncomfortable with going uh online and just fishing for people. Um, and and you might trust the town, so to speak, or another entity to do the um the vetting. And you know, you might say, well, I have two rooms available um and there might be uh the town, let's say, that that vets. Um, you know, that matches people with extra rooms versus people that are looking for rooms. And having that um go between might ease some of the tension that people feel about making that decision and letting strangers in their room. So that that was kind of along the lines, what I was thinking of. Um, it wasn't really fleshed out more than that. But just knowing that especially with seniors, you know, a lot of times they're not on social media, they're not online, they do have extra rooms. Um, and if there was a way to make it easier for them to feel comfortable letting a stranger in and knowing that this person's vetted. Um, you know, establishing the the rules and regulations, um, that might be something that we might want to explore.
As long as we had a way to make sure we definitely are protecting the seniors, because some of us, I am a senior. Uh, played sometimes by people with the best intent. And I just have a question, because and I know there's some better minds in mind out there that will let me know. Um, that the nursing home, I guess, was just sold and 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 to uh another uh group of folks, if you will. Is there any way that we could include that in some way of offering some incentive for some workforce housing or affordable housing in that building?
Could we finish the last discussion before we go into that?
Absolutely.
Yeah, go ahead.
So I don't see why you don't have matchmaking program between property owners and long term tenants with rooms to spare.
And long term tenants. Sure, I mean, we could, we could absolutely put that, so um. So you're saying subletting or what do you, what are you leaning towards, Jonathan?
Well, uh, you know, tenants lose partners, tenants have family move out. And it's do all sorts of things and they have spare rooms. Why, why wouldn't you want to include them in that discussion?
Okay, okay.
Okay, I mean, it's not that you don't want to, it just hasn't been thought of, so, okay. Tunnels, uh, so if let's say you have a two bedroom apartment and you're um.
Your roommate moves out.
Roommate moves out, then you have an extra. Yeah, sure, absolutely. Good, good point, Jonathan. Um, so any more thoughts about that, like who, you know, it might, this might be something that uh a private entity would would facilitate this?
Yeah, I mean, I I, once again, I'm not sure whether our town staff can do it, so.
Exactly, yeah, that's why I have it down for four, because um this is the one of the things. I mean, similar to Windflower with uh what what constructs looking at right now. Um, one of the initiatives that we're exploring is kind of really being a go between uh between businesses. And uh, you know, they're looking for places to house their staff and construct, so um. You know, in theory, let's say a business might have vetted an employee and might say, well, this person's been vetted. We know that, you know, they're they're good for their money, they have a job. Um, so that, you know, in in theory, that would be a kind of a go between to ease the process. So along those same lines with this matchmaking program um that I was just kind of thinking about. That if we could facilitate that or, you know, some entity, a private entity could facilitate that, that might be a great, a great way to create more housing. And repurpose existing housing, so.
I mean, it could also be a social media site that the town creates.
Exactly, yeah. I mean, one of the 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 options I was thinking of is the town uh would come up with a separate site and do this on the side or private, so, yeah.
Well, if we have a private, we'd also have to make sure they meet a set of rules as well.
Yeah, of course, yeah, yeah. Yeah, it it might be that uh, you know, an app is created and and the town, you know, buys into that, so. Um, I just, you know, I'm aware of so many people that have homes with extra rooms, but they don't really want to go on to. You know, the s- social media sites or online to find someone.
Yeah, well, and every year at the country club, we have uh two assistant pros who come in from out of town are always looking for housing and this year. This year, the tennis pro couldn't find him, so we lost him.
Yeah, exactly, exactly. Exactly, so.
I mean, if we can, we can have some kind of marketplace for uh, you know, rooms. Whatever, it's a job.
Yeah, okay.
Spends money in the community.
So is that worth a a kind of put a, not a priority, but just kind of make a note that we're, we seem to be kind of interested in something.
See, I mean, this may be the kind of thing when we, when we do bring people, you know, different groups in to discuss these things. There may be some discussion with uh one of the nonprofits to say, is this something that might? You know, fit up your alley and what, you know, what kind of incentive would they need to uh to run something like this?
Yeah, absolutely. Yep. Okay. Um, great. Any one else? Um, Garfield, do you want to bring back your your point that you're making?
Oh, just that uh I was not aware of how that really worked and if it was something we could do. I had asked Mark about it, I guess, the other day, we had a little meeting about that nursing home that was kind of like a hot topic for a while. And it just kind of died away and then he told me it was sold to another private company. I just noticed it was something that we could approach them with, since we were talking about incentives. That's something we can incentivize them.
Yeah, I mean, I I think uh it it is um with a private developer, as far as I know, that they want to make condos and. Think that if if they were seeking uh financing from the town, they might come to us and and um, you know, seek financing uh in lieu of. You know, maybe offering some of it for affordable, but I don't, you know, it's it's up to the the private developer, really, up to us, but it's good to keep on our radar for sure. Yeah. I mean, that would have been an ideal site for some workforce and affordable housing.
On this bus line, et cetera, et cetera. Feet from town, police station, hospital, yeah, sort of all the makings.
Yeah, yeah, and and that's where you would really hope that some of the stakeholders with affordable housing, such as construct or the CDC or. The Affordable Housing Trust, that they would have a pool of money that they could jump on these opportunities and. You know, get a property before it goes into private developer's hands.
That'd be nice.
Yeah. Absolutely. Okay, um, Jonathan, did you have anything you wanted to add to this spreadsheet? I mean, obviously, we'll be adding as we go, but just to, if something came up since the last meeting.
No.
Okay. Um, I do know that I've uh requested town staff to look at uh apartments in town downtown. That are quote affordable, um, just with knowing what's happening with the Berkshire block. Uh apartment, or sorry, the Mahawi block apartments. And being concerned that some of the other apartments downtown um. Might go up for sale and we might want to know if that happens or is about to happen to to keep those affordable. Uh, so that would be involving uh an inventory of um downtown apartments. And who owns that? Uh, another. Um, request that I made from town was to uh, you know, take a look at the the blighted properties or the properties that um. Might have a lien against them, so we could, you know, be the the first in line to jump on an auction. Um, or direct it towards the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. So then, again, that's something that we would, town or the assessor. Um, so the level of impact, we'd have to take a look at that. So that's what this, you know, target bliding, blighted properties. Jonathan, I had mentioned the uh Attorney General's Abandon um Housing Receivership Fund Program. So that's uh, so construct has has uh, we're a receiver, we're a state receiver, a nonprofit state receiver. So we've taken um two properties in Beckett. Uh, we we sold one recently and we have another in Beckett and we're also working with Lennox, so we have two properties that they've taken over. Um, through this receivership fund program, so that is something a municipality could um jump on. And uh you you don't, you know, construct does pay prevailing wages anyways, but it it um, so I think you'd mentioned something about that might be. Out of the realms of possibilities for Great Barrington to um to take advantage of, but it's something that I've I've mentioned to Chris. Uh, unfortunately, it's it's very laborious and it's, you know, it's one unit at a time. Um, but it's something that it might be just good to be on our radar. So um.
Receiver ship can also go to auction. Do you sell things?
Well, yeah, we we had a lottery, so uh anyone that was income qualified um would apply and it would be a lottery. So it it was done that, you know, we weren't able to judge any ownership, as long as they income qualified, that was fine, and then it was picked through a lottery. So um it was a lottery other than auction.
And then any work they do does not have to be prevailing wage.
Yeah. 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 So it is, uh, you know, it's it is a lot of work and uh but it's something that, you know, if a if a property is is under a tax lien or is blighted, that's something that the town could. Could um become a receiver and follow through.
You might reach out to Pittsfield because they have a ton of this.
Hmm.
They have receivership everywhere.
Okay. Yeah. Um, you know, again, that's something a resource that, you know, we just don't have town staff to to do this. I know with Beckett, it took us years to get through that and that was just one. One house, single house that that we've given to um a couple in Great Barrington, actually. But I'll I'll make a note so we'll get it still. Okay. Um, so I'm not going to keep you guys long because I know it's uh two o'clock, but uh what I'll do is I'll uh do a PDF of where this is right now, so we can see where we left off. And um I'll be sharing this with Chris, so uh he and I and probably Mark will take a look at this and maybe Steve. And then the next meeting, we'll bring this and we'll continue the discussion, and if there's other strategies that that come across uh your path. And you know, between now and the next meeting, just let me know and I can add it to the um the sheet. So. That sound good. Um, can we uh, let's just see first, before we open up to citizens and the press. Can we pick a another, our next meeting time, or does anyone else have anything else to say?
Yes, I'm pleased of the way our meeting went today, as opposed to that, I thought we were kind of productive today and I I appreciate that.
Oh, thank you. Thanks to everyone. Um, does this, does this work for everyone in terms of the Tuesdays at one? Can we keep this time?
Uh, good with me.
So November eighth, actually, sorry, November eighth uh. Yeah, yeah, that's election day, uh, November fifteenth, do you want to move it one more?
I'm flying out to the West Coast on November fifteenth and won't be back until uh first week in December.
Ooh, lucky you.
So I can meet uh by Zoom, um, but not on the fifteenth.
Okay. Jonathan and Garfield, do you guys have a a time that's works for you?
I mean.
This is.
Is the reason why we couldn't meet on election day, though?
They really discourage it and and uh. It's. Yeah, yeah, it's not.
I have three weeks from now.
Yeah. Um, I mean, we could meet in three weeks, exactly, we we could move it up one, so we could meet on the first. If that works for you guys and. Yeah, Jonathan, are you okay for the first?
Uh, I think so. And it is the first day of American Indian Heritage Month.
I saw that. Okay, so I'll put down November first at one P M. If there's any changes, I'll I'll share with you. Yeah. Uh, so anything before I open up to citizens? Citizens, speak. Okay, anyone um in the citizens uh who would like to speak? We have, um, just so you know, we had uh nine panelists, we have five attendees uh with the four panelists, so. Okay, anyone from the?
Oh, sorry. They're speechless. That was amazing.
Are we bored them? Okay. And then my cats didn't make a appearance this time, that's good. Um, anyone from the the press? Uh, Eileen Mooney, I'm gonna let you speak. Okay, um, hi, Eileen.
Hi. Is the worksheet going to be put on your website page?
Yes, I'll I'll have a PDF and we'll put that up um along with the um the minutes, so that will be.
Great, and are you going to put? Or to resume putting recordings of of your meetings on that page?
Um, I think that's a staff resource, uh, you know, Amy is in charge of taking the recordings and um going through them, so I'm not sure. Uh, I can ask her, certainly, Eileen, about the housing subcommittee um meetings, if she's able to to put those in, so I'll I'll certainly.
They used to be put up.
Yeah.
Every three years, so.
Okay. Thanks.
I'll second that request, Ashley, because I've been participating in so much of the discussions, I haven't really taken detailed minutes.
Yeah, it's, you know, you're doing a great job, Malcolm. I just, I want to thank you because I I certainly could not do that, so I really.
Will need the, I will need the recording.
Okay, all right, I'll I'll certainly ask that. Um, I see Sheila, so Sheila Clarice is going to be speaking. Hi, Sheila.
Hi there, I'm just wondering with all of the work to be done, if it's ever been pitched to have a town employee entirely helping related.
Uh, to have a housing uh designated housing staff.
Like I I knew position or to whoever someone's existing position.
Yeah, um, I I think Sheila, um, and correct me if I'm wrong, uh, Housing Subcommittee, that we did discuss that in the first day. We thought that um to spend the money to hire an additional staff person, um, it's something that we could do internally. But that was discussed, uh, whether to to um designate some funds for that. Is that correct? Did I hear that?
Yeah, I I didn't participate in that discussion, but I do think that as we look through this list, the weight of the things we want to do. May uh argue for for a housing coordinator in the in in town staff, but I, you know, I, there's no specific proposal for that, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I think that um, you know, that was covered briefly on the very first go around of the housing worksheet. And we put a note to handle internally, but as we can, you know, quickly see, there's quite an awful lot to tackle, so that might be something we want to bring up during budget season, so. Great. Okay, anything else that anyone would like to say, any um last minute thoughts? Okay, so do I have a motion to uh John?
So.
Any second? Anyone want a second?
Oh, Lee, is Bill Shine asking to speak? I see his name.
Uh, I see his name, I don't see his hand now.
Okay.
Um.
Sorry, I think I I clicked it accidentally.
Okay.
This Zoom thing is so new to everybody, you know?
It is, it is. Well, you're always welcome to speak, but I'm going to disable you now, so. Okay. All right, well, thank you so much and I'll see you guys November first at one P M.
Best man.
Bye.